Hey guys, it's your girl Annette Harris, the host of Mind, Body and Soul with Annette. And now your certified mental health ambassador. It's a new season, Thursday, January 14th at 12 noon Central Standard Time will be the first segment of 2021. It's gonna be on a special date, that's right, please take note of the day change for this segment only. It is on this date that I will highlight a powerful brother sister media producer combo in the persons of Howard Gibson and Kristelle Gibson of Dem Gibson's Films. You've probably heard of them, well guess what? Their latest project Double Cross will debut on various TV outlets on January 14th. Plan to listen in as we talk about this project and their life journey through the media world. It's going to blow your mind. Join the Get Caught Internet Experience 2021, we will see you soon.
You are now tuned in to Mind, Body and Soul with Annette. Where your host, Annette Harris, analyze intriguing life questions and concerns such as, do Christians suffer from mental illness? Have you wondered why they act abnormal? Or you may ask, what is really going on in their minds? Do you need an app? Well, keep listening for a biblical understanding of the psychology of the mind.
Hey guys, welcome, welcome, welcome to another wonderful session of Mind, Body and Soul with Annette. Get Caught Internet Experience 2021, I'm your host, Annette Harris. Thank you so much for joining us on today for watching and or listening, I am so excited. Listen, we are 14 days into the new year, but this is our first session of the new year. So I wanna say happy, I'll say happy anniversary, happy new year. Well, if anybody has an anniversary out there today, happy anniversary to you too. But happy new year everyone, I feel like I have been gone for like forever. Uh, we just took a few weeks off, ending the year of 2020 and coming into the beginning of 2021. A girl needs a break every once in a while guys, I need a break. So, um, there are a lot of things that are going on that are happening and you guys just stay tuned. I'm telling you, uh, the Get Caught Internet Experience is gonna be real on this year. So I don't want you to miss a thing, I'm working on some things in the background. Um, some things the Lord is directing me to do, so, uh, I'm excited because there are new things uh, that are happening and I just can't wait for all of you to discover what that is and to be involved with me, uh, with what that is. Um, so you know, of course, you know what I always like to do before I get started doing a session, a show. I always like to acknowledge the Lord in prayer and so I'm gonna do just that. Lord, I thank you for this wonderful day, I thank you for blessing us to see a new year. We thank you for how you are and who you are, we ask that you would get the glory out of this session and everything we go to say and do, in Jesus' name we pray. And the opening scripture that I normally like to quote is the first part of Hosea 4 and 6 and it states, "My people are destroyed for lack of knowledge, because thou hast rejected knowledge, I will also reject thee." And again, I'm excited to be here, I'm excited that you're here with me. Uh, many of you, you guys had me cracking up, uh, you were thrown off because of the day. Yes, this is a special session, a special segment of Mind, Body and Soul on today. I'm normally on Wednesdays, yes, that is accurate, Wednesdays at 12 noon is my normal time that I air live. Uh, but I actually changed the, um, day for this session only because I was trying to accommodate my guests on today. So I'm gonna talk actually until they get here, until they come on into the live feed, but I, I'm excited. Um, I'm, you know, we went through an entire lot as a country, as a nation on last year in 2020 and it seems as we're still going through some things, but I am, I am encouraged and I'm excited because you know what? Even though we've gone through things, God has not left us and he has actually blessed us um, to even see this day, this hour in the day. And I don't take it for granted, which means to me that there are still more things that he wants to do with us and through us because we are here. And so that's why I'm excited, my, my hope is not in man, um, my hope is in the Lord. Um, so I'm gonna go over here real quick, I'm doing some sharing as I'm talking and I wanna see who is on here with me because I wanna recognize you guys and I haven't seen y'all since last year. Or looked at your names since last year and so, oh, let's see here, I think Maya, okay, here we go. Deatress is here, hey Deatress, good afternoon, oh, you're so sweet, thank you, thank you my dear, I appreciate you. Hey triplet, Trip, Trip, Trip's in the house, hey Dee, how are you my friend? Thanks for coming in and joining us on today. Listen, listen, Gail, I see you, hey missionary Carolyn, how are you? I'm not gonna call you your other nickname, how are you? Thanks for watching my sweet, those are my girls, those Gerald girls, those are my girls right there, all of them, all of them, I love them, I love them to life. But anyway, um, there are more names on here, so, um, or more views on here. So if you can maybe type in who you are, that way I can recognize you because I can't see the name. Um, Gail Reed Thomas, how are you? Thanks for watching, dear, I appreciate you, thanks for coming on in, I appreciate it. Yeah guys, I'm, I'm, I'm excited, I do wanna let you know that when you come into this live feed, click that share button. What's my motto, it costs you nothing, zero. It doesn't cost you anything, just click the share button, that way you'll push, you'll help me pushing this live feed out and then others will know that we are on as well. And I'm so, hey Shavon, how are you sweetie, good to see you. Thank you so much, so much for joining us on today. So of course we are here on our, um, Facebook Live page, Annette Get Caught in Annette. And then we are, uh, the audio portion is live on my YouTube channel. If you have not subscribed, please do so, click the subscribe button, go to YouTube, type in Get Caught Internet, click subscribe, you will hear the audio portion there on today and then at the end of the show, we're gonna upload the video portion. Um, so I, I see you, I see you Gail, thank you. Um, Mr. Gibson, I see you on the live, but can you actually log into the Zoom? Um, the Zoom link, if you would not mind, Mr. Gibson? Uh, we're waiting on you and your sister, my, my viewers are waiting on you all to come on into the Zoom, uh, link. Uh, let's see, uh, who else did I see? You need a fresh link, okay, Mr. Gibson, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna, can I inbox you the fresh link? How about I do that? I'm gonna inbox you the fresh link right now while, while we have you on because I don't want my listeners to miss you. They are so excited, I am so excited, Mr. Gibson, to have you on. So let me do this while I have you and we're gonna make sure we get this, this link to you. Uh, Brandy, I see you, she says she's so excited about this show and I am excited too, Brand, I am, okay. Let's see, I'm doing this all on the fly guys, doing it all on the fly, but you know what? I, I love what I do, I love coming in and, um, talking to you guys, I love having my show. We'll, we'll get him in in a few seconds guys, we're gonna get him in in a few seconds. Um, but yeah, this is exciting because again, like I said, it's a new year. It is, um, it, it's a new season, it's a new opportunity for the Lord to bless. And so like I said earlier, I am looking forward to what God is going to do, what he, his, his, his moving. I said he left us here for a reason guys, he really did and we don't wanna take any of that for granted. Um, so we need to be about our Father's business, alright? We need to be about our Father's business, I see more of you coming in. Hey Nicole, thanks for watching, I appreciate you also on today. And let's see here, you guys make sure you click that share button, click the share button and then we will make sure that everyone else knows about this. Mr. Gibson, let's see, I think you are coming in now. Okay, alright, alright, alright. So as they're coming in guys, yes, 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 I see them, hi, they made it, yay. Hi, listen, you're, how do you pronounce your first, is it Crystal or Kristelle?
You could call me Crystal, it's either one, Crystal's fine.
Okay.
I answer to both.
Do you? I, I was, I was talking on my promo and I said, I heard myself say Kristelle, just because of the way it's spelled. I don't know if that's how she pronounces it though.
Yeah, it's, it's Crystal, but I, it doesn't, I answer to both of them.
Okay, okay, well, I don't wanna disrespect anybody's name, that's why I always ask, so, but no, this, this is great, this is great stuff. So you guys are here now, I'm so excited, let me do a gallery view here and we will see Mr. Gibson also, how are you, Mr. Gibson?
Okay, I'm good, I'm good, hello.
Good, 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 well, I'm Annette, now this is different because typically I will talk to my guests prior to the show. But so I'm just now meeting you guys and may I say before I get into anything, I am, I've just learned about the two of you, but I am so proud of both of you, my brother and my sister, I really am. Very proud of the both of you and your accomplishments thus far. Because when I saw the, um, the advertisement and I said, oh, is this a new series? But this is the second season of this particular one we're gonna talk about on today. But then I'm looking at your, 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 um, bios, I'm like, my, they've been around for a long time and they've been doing some work, they've been putting in work. So we're gonna get into that on today guys and I, I'm so excited that you are here, that you are joining us. We'll also be interacting with our Facebook Live, uh, comments and our, and our questions because I know a lot of them said they had questions for you because they're excited about you as well and your, uh, your journey and also your series. Now let, let, let me say this, that on today, if I'm not mistaken, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, the 14th is when, is the debut of the second season, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, the second season you guys probably talking of what? Double Cross is the series name everyone and so that's debuting today on various TV outlets and we're gonna talk a little bit more about that because we're, they're trying to push and promote this and I, I wanna do what I can to help them push and promote it as well. So, um, let's see guys, I, what I want to see if you can do, and thanks guys for tagging individuals in the live feed, I appreciate that if you would do, do that and also again, share the live feed. Listen, I would love for both of you, if you could take time, uh, and introduce yourselves to my, uh, viewers and my listeners. Um, some of them have heard of your projects and some of them have not, so some you may be introducing and or reintroducing yourselves to, so I don't wanna, I don't know who wants to go first.
Howard.
Gibson, uh, I've been a filmmaker for quite some time since I got, got into the business professionally in 1992. So it's been a long time, a long journey to get to this point, uh, so here I am.
As modest as he is and I don't know if I should go take time and read that book that I, I received.
I've done a lot, I've done a lot, no, yeah, I started in music videos and, uh, P A in on, uh, film sets and, uh, sorry, it's my mom calling me, right? I think she's looking on the feed.
She just called me too.
Um, so yeah, I've been doing that for many, many years and that just kinda just, you know, slowly, uh, pull myself up the ranks, uh, coming into the camera department, I, I became the first black Steadicam operator in 1994. Uh, and I heard about it and I saw it and saw that it was a new technology helping out to advance the movements and create quality. And so I wanted to do that, you know, and, um, so I, I was fortunate enough to get into the UCLA, uh, film program up in Maine and, uh, and learned and got certified and, and came back down and came and hit, hit the ground running, you know, and, uh, because I was the only black guy ended doing it and I was young. My name kinda got out there quickly and, uh, I started finding myself, uh, into music videos, uh, and commercials for many, many years and, uh, that kinda dried up and dried out. Uh, did straight to DVD films, uh, produced them and wrote and directed them back in the, in the late 90s. I did my first one, Guilty by Association with Morgan Freeman, um, and that went straight to DVD. Lionsgate, uh, you can check it out, it was Artisan back then, but Lionsgate Entertainment. And, um, you know, and just kept working, just kept working. My sister and I initially, you know, worked together in the beginning, doing projects together and then I went one way, uh, doing music videos and Crystal raised the family and started writing books down the stretch and, um, and, uh, so about five or six years ago, when Crystal was writing the books, I was working with, uh, uh, the Wayans at that time and doing some work with them, uh, Marlin Wayans. And, uh, and, uh, Crystal had released her book that same time, right? I think it was around that same time. We did a big tour around and, uh, and, uh, Crystal was like, I'm gonna get in movie business, I'm gonna get back in and we were hanging out, you know, and she hit that bug with the red carpet. I remember you were right there with Floyd Mayweather and, uh, uh, who was it, who was there? It was like right there, it was crazy.
God, Lisa Bray, boy, just, yeah.
Everybody was there, we had a really good time and, and Crystal, you know, Crystal said, you know, I wanna get back into it and, uh, I said, yeah, let's do it and, and over the course of that time, you know, she's just started developing a career, started doing that, uh, while I was actually, at that time, let's call it five or six years ago, I was more into technology, understanding the new wave of, uh, filmmaking, the new wave of monetizing, um, content and, uh, and so I was in it. So really, really early, I was in it when it came to, um, mobile, uh, when it came to, uh, streaming and so when it came to AI intelligence and subscription models, so I know all about AVOD, SVODs and everything else you can imagine. Uh, and so now we're here, this is a streaming channel and I saw it right in the wall, we prepared. And, uh, when the, when it called, when the opportunity came to it, we were there and we stood. And now with, uh, New All Black Networks, Double Cross is officially released today, uh, and, uh, we're excited about it. And, uh, season one came out, it was pretty cool, season one came out, um, I guess 2020 April and, uh, everybody was home, the pandemic hit and, uh, we didn't know what to expect and, uh, episode one blew up, you know, it was one of those things where Crystal and I were sitting back, we didn't know how people going to relate to it and, and I started looking at social media, we're talking to the network and they started promoting and they did a couple of clips and once they put those clips out, I think the first few hours I called my sister and said, I think we got 400,000. I don't know if that's regular, Crystal.
Yeah, he's like, I think we're going viral.
I think we're going viral and then by that next morning, we were over 2 million and, and then every single day after that, it was a million every day. So we were hitting a million streams across the board every day. Um, by the middle of episode three, we were well over 19, 20 million across the stream. We had already hit number one across the, um, streaming billboards outweighing Netflix and, uh, Michelle Obama's release, because she released the same day as us. So when we saw that, we were like, what? And it just hit, it kept going and going and going and by the end of the finale, um, Double Cross had taken U M C 200% increase in subscription model. Um, we went across the board, Amazon, we broke records in Amazon Prime, Apple Plus and, uh, the mainstream Hollywood reached out to the network. I remember, I remember Hollywood Reporter reaching out saying, I never even heard of U M C before.
Yeah, it was another one, it was another one too, uh, who had never even heard of U M C.
So many, oh.
But, and this was like white Hollywood and they had never heard of U M C, they didn't hear of us, but they, uh, saw the show, I think of, of one of their wives.
Right.
And she was like, you have to get them on. And they called the network looking for us and, uh, we did an interview.
Backed us down, found us, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it was like a mainstream vlog, just, it was just amazing.
Yeah.
Wow.
Since that time, you'll see us right now on People Magazine, we'll be on Essence and, uh, Variety Deadline and a number of others that are coming out. Hollywood Reporter, you'll start seeing big posts, we have some billboards coming out across the country. Um, Los Angeles, we've got, uh, Sunset and Doheny, these big two boards that'll be out there, 15, 20 feet tall on both sides of the street. We've got, uh, New York City, uh, we've got Chicago, Dallas and Atlanta. So we're excited, um, that, you know, All Black Network is excited about us and we're, and we're growing this network with them. And, uh, Bob Johnson, he's the, he's the mastermind behind it, he's a gracious giant and, uh, and, uh, he's definitely helping us out in a major way. So we are excited today of the release of January 14th.
14.
It has been long. And, uh, it's just amazing, uh, the type of concentration that we had to put in and the speed because we didn't find out that we had season three, I guess it was like episode three, when they called us and they said, listen, we gotta figure it out.
The first season two?
Season two, yeah, we got the call by, because normally contracts say, we'll look at the end of the show, then we will review it, we'll go to board and then we'll figure out if we want it. Episode three, they picked up the phone like, can you get, how fast can you write?
Can I say something, Mr. Gibson, you, you started saying episode, I'm sorry, season three, maybe, are you speaking that into existence already?
Yeah, uh, so. So it was episode three when we got the call for the green light episode two.
Season two.
Right, right.
Yes, season two. So now, season three. Yeah, so ladies, I don't know about that.
We have officially, you know, we have to officially.
Said anything, yeah. We're writing, we're writing.
Okay, alright, so somebody must be getting ready for something, that's what, that's what I think. But this is wonderful, I love this. Now let me, let me, let me back it up, I know we, we have a few questions, but I wanted to ask you real quick. Now when you mentioned about the first season and how everything just took off and you know, the followers, the viewers were just way out the box, why do you think that was?
Um, you want my, 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 my honest answer? Uh, God put his hand on it, blessed and highly favored. Um, you know, it was in the middle of the, the pandemic, so we released in May, um, into June, our finale was in June, everybody was home. But yet and still there are other shows that released at the same time and they didn't do what we did. Um, so I can only surmise that God put his hand on it because we were completely, uh, taken aback, we weren't ready. Like, wait a second, this thing just went viral, never in our wildest thoughts. That's, that's why I believe that you should always trust God's plan because if you had asked me to do it, I would have never have thought to, to do something like that, you know, it wasn't even in my brain to do that. Um, but God's plans are always the best plans.
Yeah, yeah, um, perfect answer, perfect answer and I, I, I believe that about you. Now, now speaking of you, Crystal, I understand that, um, how you, you got started into even producing and you, you began young, I think you wrote something, uh, was it a?
Trail of Tears.
Yeah, when you were on 20 or something like that?
Yeah, I wrote my first screenplay, uh, just to see if I could do it. Um, I didn't really know what I was doing, I was just gonna tell people that. Um, but I was like, let me see if I could do it. What, the, the confidence that I had was that I knew how to tell a story, but I never put it in a screenplay format and so I didn't know what it was gonna do. But, uh, you know, the, the industry took to, my brother was able to get into, uh, the hands of, uh, some producers and from there, it was just like this huge domino, um, effect to where, you know, Warner Brothers was calling us and, uh, Howard and I, um, we went out to LA, met with, uh, Alan Wertheim and we were on the Warner Brothers lot and I remember, you know, we were just in awe, right? Because it was our first time being there, we were there together, our parents weren't with us. You know, they sent us out there, like our dad had us a car rental, you know, set us up and, you know, we're, we're on the Warner Brothers lot and it's like, oh my gosh, and then we walked into his office and I remember there being just this huge wall of scripts behind his desk. But my script was sitting on his desk and I thought, how did I make it pass all these scripts? And, um, he took us out to, uh, breakfast and, you know, we had a meeting and he looked at me, he was like, you don't even know what you wrote dude. And I was like, what do you mean? And I was like, I wrote a script, you know, he's like, no, you wrote something, something epic. And I was like, I did, you know, and, um, you know, he was making offers to us back then. Um, predicated, we, uh, wrote another screenplay first, like they were trying to line us up, you know, they told us we were marketable, you know, we told them our aspirations of directing. But that deal still wasn't so comfortable for me, then Disney, uh, offered for me to be in their writers college and I was so excited, uh, to take that offer, but I wasn't reading the firm print, which my father was. And he was like, you know, you sign this contract, you go to, to their school, they're gonna own your projects for so many years. He was like, don't take that, so I turned that down and then from there, um, Felicia Rashad reached out to us and we met with her and Richard Roundtree and Al Freeman Jr. and Sally Richardson. They were filming this movie called When We Were Colored and they invited Howard and myself down and, you know, they kinda like sat at a round table with us and I remember they were breaking the script down and they're like, I like what you did with this character and, and in my mind, I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about. I didn't realize at that time the talent for writing that I had. And so everybody else could see it, um, but I couldn't necessarily see it because I just, I just wrote, you know, but apparently I did it correctly. And, um, then, uh, Chief Wema Mankiller, she was the chief of the Cherokee Nation at the time.
supported us for sure.
Contact us and that was the most nervous conversation because Howard and I are Cherokee, uh, black Indian. Um, and we actually had an ancestor that walked on the Trail of Tears, but I thought for sure, uh, Chief Wema Mankiller was gonna tell us, well, you guys don't have any right to write this because you're not full blood. Like I didn't know, but she actually loved it.
Racist.
She loved the screenplay and she was like, you know, when you're ready to shoot it, you know, contact, and she's passed away by, um, now, she's passed away, so rest in peace. But she was like, when you guys are ready to do this, like contact the Cherokee Nation, you know. So all of these things were happening around that, um, and when I really started to realize the gravity of it, it, I kinda backed away from it. Because I'm like, these people don't know that I just wrote it just to see if I could write, you know what I mean? So I wasn't, I wasn't ready at that time and I backed away and I, you know, I was still working on, I was working on projects until like, I was like eight months pregnant. And I remember Howard was shooting the film with Morgan Freeman, Guilty by Association and I was on set and I'm, I'm literally eight months pregnant and I'm bumping into stuff. Like I'm tripping up and the crew was like, oh my God, she's, you know, and Howard looked at me and was like, go home. I was like, I don't wanna go, he was like, you cannot be here right now. And so I cried, you know, you pregnant, you cry so much anyway. And then, um, I drove home. And I was like, it's not fair, they're all on set and I have to go home. But, um, I just went on with my, my life with my husband and my, my children and, um, I did that for, for many years just being a stay at home mom. Until I got that burning desire, I'm like, ah, I'm, I'm more than just this, this is great, you know, being a mom, but I had, I still, I have to tell stories, I have to write and so, uh, once I had that revelation, I went full force and so here I am.
Well now, what year was that revelation when you were like, I need to get back into this?
Um, I had met with Felicia Rashad. So I was doing a red carpet for this, uh, YouTube station called Mad Flavor TV and I remember Malik called me and he was like, Felicia Rashad's in town at the Black Caucus, you know, we need to go do a red carpet. And so, um, I was like, okay, let's go, I haven't seen Felicia Rashad in 20 years, you know, and I was like, yeah, I gotta go talk to her, so we went to this press room and it was like, uh, CNN, NBC, ABC, all these big stations. And I was like, yeah, I gotta go talk to her. So we went to this press room and it was like uh CNN, NBC, ABC, all these big stations. And here we are, this little YouTube station. And she was interviewing with someone sitting down. And I told Malik, I said, as soon as that dude gets up, I'm running. I was in stilettos and everything. I darted past everybody and I sat down. And you know, I said to her, I was like, hi. I was like, you might not remember me, you know, we, we met twenty years ago. And she was like, we did. And I was like, yes, that I, you know, I wrote a screenplay on black Indians. And she patted my leg. She said, and your name is Crystal Gibson? And the name of your screenplay is Trail of Tears. And I was like, you remember me? She was like, yes. So she gave me this big hug. She was like, how's Howard? How's your dad? And she's, you know, asking all these questions. And she's asking me, what, what am I doing now? And I, you know, I told her that I was writing, but I wasn't, you know, back into the film part of it. And you know, I told her, it's been so hard. And she looked at me and she said, it's been hard for all of us, but you mustn't give up. You know, and that Felicia Rashad way. And then she was like, excuse me for a moment. So she stood up and she told everybody in the room. She said, I need everybody's attention. And she was like, this young woman's name is Crystal Gibson. And she's one of the most talented writers I know. And I need you to remember her name because you'll be hearing from her soon. And then she sat back down, right? And I'm like, tears coming down my eyes. I'm like, oh, that's a lot of pressure. She not told CNN. Like, I'm one of the most talented writers. She knows, she's only, you know, read that one script. And um she grabbed my hands and she just told the room that she needed a minute. And she said, I know you've been on a journey. And I know it's been hard, but you have got to keep pushing. And what you need to be doing is writing screenplays. That's what you need to do. So I was like, okay. She's like, I'm, I'm telling you, Crystal, write screenplays. Get back out there. She said, get Trail of Tears done. Tell Howard, get Trail of Tears done. She said, now you have Netflix and Amazon. She said, you have so many more platforms and you can tell more of the story. And she said, uh, uh, when you get this, uh, no, she said, when you're ready to do Trail of Tears, call me. That's what she said. So I said, I don't have your, your number. I need your phone number. She said, I'm not gonna give you my phone number. Because if you set yourself up properly, you don't need my phone number. You'll be able to get in contact with me. And I was like, wow. Because she was pressing me to do it, to go do it. She wasn't gonna give me her phone number right then. She was like, no, you go out there, you do it, you set yourself up properly. If you set yourself up properly, and now we have a, a team of people, we have, they know how to call her. And right now, I can get Felicia Rashad on the phone if I wanted to, you know, because I'm set up properly to do that.
That's right.
I love this. I love it. So I mean, I, and I love her spirit because she loves to, to pay it forward. She really does. And, and so I, I could hear her as you were saying, you know, what you do, so.
Mustn't give up.
Right, there you go. I love it. Now, I want to give a shout out. We have to give a shout out to your father, right? Because I believe this is where that, that blood comes from, for the both of you, right?
Right.
So ta, talk about him. Talk, talk about dad. I mean, because I believe he got you started.
Shout out, shout out to both mom and dad, Dan and Bash. They, they were very instrumental in a number of fashions. One, I, I think about it when I sit back and look at him. My dad was a, he's a builder, so he creates. He, he does his own architectural designs. And you know, he'll go out and build it and it'll be incredible. My dad builds churches. I mean, we've seen him build everything, big houses from scratch, you know, like, you know, I just grew up looking at him, you know, looking at gravel and I come back a couple of months later, it's a whole house. You know what I'm saying? And, and it's a nice looking house, you know, and, and he put in a har, a lot of hard work. And he documented all that stuff, you know? He had the camera. He would set up his tripod and all that kind of stuff and shoot himself. And this is many, many years in film, you know? My dad was working with eight millimeter sixteen and then into video. And so that love resonates into me. I mean, I love, I, I'm the same way. I love design. I love building. I love infrastructure. My mom is, is a natural born entrepreneur. And uh she's, she has taught you a program. She has taught you some kind of, some sort of business model in, in the moment's notice, you know? And she, she's a first lady at church. And every new program, my mama was like ministry and health, sick and shut in, food banks. I mean, that out church started expanding incredibly. And uh, and that again culminated into all the things to who we are today. That's the way we think. We think about growth in family, growth in community. And we build like that. We build like we at church, you know? We build in that mentality of community and family. And that's how, that's what you're gonna get when you come to a Dem Gibson set. I've had people who I worked before for thirty years, they're on our set. Shout out to Keith L, L Smith, our DP. He uh did Natural Born Killer, Any Given Sunday. He came to our set and said, I ain't never been on no set like this before. That's right. And so he's like, this one right here is just like, man, we come home fam. Listen, and then we push, we say, uh, stop, we set up a new system, a new setup. We done turn on old school. We listen to uh, I don't know. Uh, 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 give me some Glass Knight and the Pips right now.
We watch that like this.
We setting up the next scene, rocking some old, you know, like this, you know? And that's, that's how we were doing it. And we out there dancing, people on there skateboarding, and people looking around like, what is this? My cousin's here, my little, my kids here, my daddy here. And we working. And people like, we really doing a TV show here? This number one show? Man, this is crazy. And so people love it. Every time, they were like, man, I please, let me come back to you. Please, let's work together again. And so that's the kind of environment that take, it took twenty-nine years to get that. Because that's where we started. I was out goal, when we were first together and we were talking about this, I was gonna be my sister's guiding light, produce this thing and shoot this thing. And we always thought, you gonna co-direct? Okay, we gonna co-direct. We, that was still. I know how to direct. You don't know how to direct. You know, but uh, all of those experiences we have and, and, and we, we cherish them. And, and, and now it's just full circle, full circle. Be persistent, be persistent, be consistent, y'all.
Oh my God, I'm so excited, guys. I am so excited. I love hearing from you. I really do. And um let me, I'm gonna hop over here to Facebook Live because you guys have just been throwing in comments and I don't want to ignore you. Um, I know um there are some Indies, independent filmmakers that are, were very interested in listening to you guys on today. So I know that they have questions for you. So if you guys can go ahead and throw those questions if you haven't already, I'm gonna scroll through uh any questions or comments that you have for the Gibsons on today. Um, please do that um rather quickly so that we can make sure that we read them and get them out. Um, I see you, Shannon. Thank you for coming on. Tara Smith, hey, Hughes, thanks, thanks for watching. I appreciate that. She says, hello, Crystal and Howard. Uh, let's see. Uh, Brandy says, um, and she's one of the indie artists that I, I know has questions for you. She says, congratulations. She knows that um, oh, she's been highly anticipating this second season is what she said. Okay, wonderful, Brandy. All right.
Is it Tara Smith or Tyra Smith?
T A R A.
Okay.
Did I pronounce it right?
No, yeah, I thought, I thought that was our uh relative.
We talked to Tara. Hey Tara, how you doing?
Yeah, she was my connection um with Apostle Verro. On today. All right, wonderful. Uh, let's see, who else do I have here? Greg Owens, thanks for watching. Joe McCord, Brandy D., Trenda Frye. Uh, D'Amica is on, Eldon McGee, Josh Matoria, thanks for watching. I appreciate you. I do have uh Eldon McGee, he has a show. I, I air, and let me tell you a little bit about uh Mind, Body and Soul, Get Caught In The Net. I air weekly. Typically, I air on a Wednesday from noon to two. But we had to finagle the days so that we can make sure to get the Gibsons, Dem Gibsons in on today. So that's why we're here on a Thursday. But the pre, the premise of the show is to actually talk about really psychological and spiritual aspects of everyday life. So um, that is one of the questions I am gonna throw at you regarding your work and regarding your um, you know, all that you do. The psychological aspect, um, which is another reason why I'd asked you that question earlier. When, when you were talking about your season kind of sprouting off. I love the response about how the Lord, he, he does have his, have his hand on you. Um, but there, you know, I wanted to know, is there, there's something else that you thought about it? But we, let me, let me throw that question since I am already here. And, and you know, I have like a flood of questions that I know I'm not gonna be able to get to today. I understand that. I get it. But let, let me ask you, as producers, tell me, what, what is, what is the psychology of a producer's mind when you are creating, um, you know, you're writing your screenplays, Crystal? When you're, when you're directing, when you're producing, what, tell me, tell me your, the psychology of your mind as you are preparing and as you are, you're getting into this.
Um, you know, really not to have any, any sort of inhibitions. Um, and to just let uh everything flow naturally. And when we're starting out on, I mean, even with me writing, I don't always know the story. I, I know the arc of the story, but I don't know the details of it. And um, I try not to let it uh pressure me. And I just keep writing until the story comes out. Um, there are times where I, I may get anxiety. Um, especially if I have a story and I'm not able to write it at that time, like, I'll physically uh get headaches. It's like all sorts of stuff happens to me until I, I gotta get the story off me. And then, you know, I write it down. Um, there are times even within, within the story, um, it used to happen to me all the time, but it doesn't anymore. But um, if I'm writing a feature film and I know that climax is gonna hit on page seventy, I would get like such bad anxiety, like my mind would just, I would like fall apart. And I would get on the phone with uh our producer, Tasha. And I would say, sooner or later, everyone's gonna figure out, I don't know what I'm doing. Like total breakdowns. And until I started just writing more and more. And then once I got to, to, to page seventy, uh, I would have more confidence because that's the pivotal point in, in the screenplay. You, you, you do all this writing for page seventy. Um, so you know, it would have some sort of psychological effect, but I've gotten, gotten better um since that time and you know, but still, I, I don't know what's gonna happen. I'll just write it, but I try not to have any inhibitions at all, you know?
I love it. Okay. And that, that's a good, that's a definitely a good way to be. I mean, even with, with anything that you're doing in life, you know what I mean? Because we, we're always second guessing ourselves. Whether we realize it or not, whether we own up to it or not, we're always second guessing. You know, you're doing something that you love to do. And a lot of times that God is calling you to do, but you're like, well, should I really do that? You know, like you say, you call up your, the.
Because you know, I don't walk around and say I'm the best writer ever. And I always know what I'm doing. That's a crock. It like, no, I don't. I don't walk around like that. But I've gotten confident in the fact that I'm, I'm able to tell a story. And once I get to the end of the script, I simply say, it's something that I like to see. And that is all I got. And I, I, because that, that keeps you humble as well. Because I'll have writers approach me and they're like, I just wrote a screenplay. And it's gonna be the best and it's gonna get Emmys. And maybe it will, right? And speaking into existence, I don't know. But you know, until you pass that screenplay off and, and get an opinion from someone that matters, you really don't know what you did. Your mama opinion don't matter because she gonna tell you, you did great. You know what I mean? But once you start giving to the executive producers and then they start saying, you know what, you, you, you have some talent or you whatever. And so um, I'm constantly being told that, but I still uh keep everything in its perspective. I know that God has given me a gift. I do know that I'm using it. When I get to having it, God is like, what did you do with your gift? I'm like, okay, just what I did with my gift, God. And I help people and I did, you know? And so uh, I really uh, I'm, I'm grateful the position that, that I am um, that I'm in right now, my brother and I. But you know, um, I have confidence, but I'm humble. And you, you should always stay humble with, with these gifts that God is giving you, you know?
Love it. Mr. Gibson, you wanna tackle that question?
Stay humble, stay focused. Really, you know, um, there's a lot of challenges that come on in life in general. So when you're talking about trying to recreate uh a life story and try to keep that cohesive in the midst of your craziness or not, and trying to tell this story, it's tough. It's tough for a lot of people uh in how to actually get a movie done. And there's, there's various phases of, you know, filmmaking. You can have an idea in your head, that's where it starts. Then you write a script. Then you have to be ready to take that script and let it go a little bit. Because it's gonna get in hands like me and I'm gonna read it, I'm gonna chop it down. I'm gonna chop it all the way down, you know? And I'm gonna look at it because the way I see it, it has to be something that can actually really produce. And I can really, and it's, it's touching the market and it's not your own personal feelings inside of it and just everything, you know? Because we gonna give you notes, we gonna take it down, we gonna wash it through, we gonna do a whole bunch of stuff. And at the end, hopefully your script is still in one tack um when it comes. And so that's a good process, but be willing to do that when you try to take that screenplay and that idea from out of your hands and into a professional's hands to get it done. So then you gotta get through that level. A lot of people don't even go past that phase, okay? You know, they have personal, you know, personal feelings about their scripts and everything else. And you know, it's just like, ah, don't read it because uh copyrights and that little, one little part and it'll, it'll stop you. So.
Now, that's a psychological effect, that, that.
That's the psychological, right? So, so you have to be confident enough. And you have to know that you have to find the core of that story or the theme of that story. So you have to understand that once you get in other people's hands, they gonna see it from a different perspective. And those are the people who can help you follow through with it. So now you have to compromise. So you gotta get your mental health straight when you come into this business. You can't get into your feelings. This is a business and we talking about millions. And I tell Chris all the time, when we gonna get behind something, we putting our life source into this. This thing takes, it's hard to get these things going. It takes a lot of work, dedication and focus. And when I focus on this thing, I see nothing else.
Right.
Tunnel vision is good in this way.
Yeah.
So, and, and I'm gonna reach the goal and Crystal gonna reach the goal. And we gonna get there, no matter what. There's no obstacles that's gonna stop us from making these things happen. We gonna face the challenges and we know that they're gonna come. So just know, coming into this, get your health, get your wealth straight. Talk to yourself a lot. Remind yourself what you're trying to do. Don't worry about trying to get that from somebody else. Get your source straight. Talk to yourself, get yourself straight. Pray yourself up every day. Crystal and I pray ourselves through this thing all the way. Every single day, I can't tell you, we in this big old building, a hundred and ten thousand square feet of facility, millions of dollars worth of sets sitting around us. And I'm walking here and saying, we are the EPs here? Is Crystal up on this?
How did we get here?
We paying checks? They people chasing us down. Is either Crystal gonna write a check or I'm gonna write a check? And I'm like, what? You know, and, and I look at this, nothing but gratefulness, nothing but warm heart. You know, eh, I don't have anything. I'm just all just tunnel vision to God's movement for us. And God's movement for us spills out to other people. The abundance flows over us. So I understand that. So when you have the right heart and mind and focus, you can accomplish anything. Nothing can stop you, nothing. If you believe in it. So get yourself right with God. Get yourself right with yourself. You know, don't blame nobody else. Come out of you and project it. Come out of you and project it. Come out of yourself. Manifest it.
I love it. Um, 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 Mr. Howard, you sound like you about to preach and, 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 and I also have a psychology session and everything. But that, those are good. I, I love, I love hearing it because you are, you're, you're helping so many people even just by your talking. And then while you're encouraging words and telling them what to do, you know, because you have some people that are at impasses, you know, they're at the fork in the road. They don't know which way to go or what to do. And they may, you know, been stuck. So to hear this is, is gonna be, it's, I receive. Because I see these uh emoticons going up. They're enjoying hearing what you're saying on today. Let me go here. There is a question here from Brandy. She says, I watched a clip of Mr. Gibson taking, oh, I did too. Taking the COVID test on set. How would they say the outbreak affected day-to-day life while filming? I'm sorry. Let me back that up. Only reason why I laugh is because of your reaction after you took that test. That's the only reason I'm laughing, okay? I'm sorry. You were like, oh my God, oh my God.
It was rough.
Imagine, oh my God. Okay, let me, let me finish the question. My apologies. How would they say the outbreak affected day-to-day life while filming? Let's go with that question first.
Day-to-day life while filming.
I mean, yeah, go ahead, Chris. You want to tackle it?
Um, so I'm not sure if she's asking day-to-day on set or just our, our day-to-day life. So I'll answer both. So while we were in um LA, we, uh, so when we go to LA to shoot, we normally will rent um, sort of like mini mansion types of houses. So uh, our team from LA, um, we can all stay together. Um, but this for season two, we could not find anything on Airbnb uh anywhere. And so we ended up in a hotel. And so that kind of affected um how we interact with each other. Like, when we're filming um uh in any capacity, we're always together. Like when we're filming, um uh in any capacity, we're always together. And it's always, you know, after we rap, we go back to the house and everybody's just together and somebody's in the couch, somebody's in there cooking. And it's just this big family environment, but this time we went back and we're in hotels and people are down this way and that way. So we weren't um together as much uh as we would have liked. And um as well as that being uh the case on set. Because uh they had different rules now and you have to to be in different zones. Uh where the actors are in zone A, but the crew is zone B. It's so weird. Then you have to take a COVID test for, and I'm not talking about the nose test, I'm talking about an actual computer test. To make sure that you understand the rules and you have to take a test for each zone. Yeah, no, we had to take a test and then you get a certificate after you take the test. And then being on set and having to take that test three days a week, that affected the uh us. Because I'm a stickler for rapping on time. Um and I will shut the set down, tell us, put the camera down, we're done. Um because I understand as an executive producer, you have to be cognizant because going overtime now means you're dipping into your budget. Because now you gotta pay these people and so, you know, you have contingencies in your budget to cover that. But first for season two, we didn't have a choice but to go over. Because we had COVID tests in the morning and we had this this uh maybe we cut the crew down. So maybe it was maybe fifty to sixty of us, but each of those tests take fifteen minutes for the results. And so we couldn't even go in the building. I can't tell you how how many hours that pushed us back. Until all of us were then able, we were meeting on set like at six in the morning. And so that pushed us back and then when we're on set, it's like social distancing. Um and you're not around each other as much, so um it was it was difficult, um but we made it through.
I can only imagine that, but you you were determined to do what you had to do. But yeah, this COVID thing, this um pandemic just really threw a monkey wrench in everything.
Well, we made it through without any COVID cases, so that was a blessing.
Oh, that's a real blessing. No COVID cases?
None.
One. And there were, there were friends of mine or other shows, producers calling me up saying, man, they shut us down. They shut us down. I'm like, how are you? I'm like, I'm good, I'm good. And they were like, wow, you know, it's just, it was it was interesting, you know. Um but we crafted, we we use strategy uh with the um operating and how we need to move. Uh we cultivated this story in one location, so we were able to do that. We have multiple uh sets in one location, so once we're in, we're in, we can move to the uh to the hospital, to the police precinct, to the various locations, all just walking, you know, within this hundred thousand square foot facility. And so, you know, we basically, you know, cocooned ourselves in and uh it worked. We only went out for two days, one day, we only went to.
Yeah, one day when we were um writing for season two and we knew knew we were gonna be shooting during COVID. Um I made the effort to keep us in that facility. So if you see season two, um you you may notice that we're not outside a lot like we were on season one. Um but we did that on on purpose because we're in this huge uh facility. It wasn't like a closed space. But so we use the the uh facility as much as, you know, we possibly could. Um also, another challenge for us is, you know, we shoot a a show that has hospital in it. And um last year, we had all these extras in the background, so you'll notice on season two, it might be one person. We hope y'all forgive us cuz it was COVID, uh so we couldn't.
Right.
Couldn't have all the extras and and things like that, but we figured people knew that, you know.
Yeah.
They they would forgive us, but that that was so weird. It's like we're shooting a hospital scene and there's no but no patients, no. And it was just weird, but.
Let me say this, all of Hollywood, you're gonna see the same thing of all those films. Because literally, we can't do crowd scenes, we can't do a lot of, you know, coming together. So a lot of films are having to rewrite themselves and uh kind of streamline their projects down. But we we are working on some other technology that we're gonna be able to solve some of those issues. But yeah, definitely, it's like closed sets, essential workers owner, only uh no extras that wasn't essential to them. And we needed it, so we had to figure it out and we had to, you know, so we moved forward.
Okay, all right, love it, love it. Um did that impact the morale of your of your crew and your cast at all?
Yeah, I mean.
I don't think it did. You think it did?
Uh well, let me say this, let me say this, um I think it was just a curiosity in the very beginning. Everybody was willing to come back. Some people who was on our team got scared and and they.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, so that affected us because we wanted some of our really good guys and people and our ADs and some of the people, and they were like, I can't, I can't. So that impacted us and we ended up having to hire some folks that we didn't necessarily know, not that that was bad, but.
Yeah, you're right.
So it impacted us and then.
You're right.
And then once we got there, two hours just getting in, I mean, they kicked me out. I had to direct an episode. That was my morning directed episode. They kicked me out. I was outside, but I I the timing was, you know, they had the limited time and cut off and I was like, what?
He wasn't able to take his test and they sent him off set.
So they sent me off set, I'm having to drive downtown, get in line on a whole another uh situation, take my test. Wait for the results. It it was good, drive it all the way back, hours, hours upon hours. So that culminated, those um going into those doors, waiting for hours, having those overtimes. It impacted us, but we didn't stop. It affected us.
Yeah, it's like it affected us somewhat, but it's all our family on set for the most part.
Oh, good.
And so like, you know, our kids work on set, our dad is on set, we have cousins on, we're everybody's filmmakers. Um and that was great uh having my daughters uh on set with me this year. Um and they they were about it too, you know. And so, but also, but Howard is making a point because we, some people didn't come back and there was some new people. So then, gosh, you have to start those relationships over again. They have to get to know you. That part, yeah.
Yeah, because we had a rhythm. So we had, we have a rhythm. Crystal and I have a certain rhythm, you know. And and we kinda cultivated certain people around us and how we move, they know how we move. And that, just that little nut of changing up, just that little pivot will change. And it and it and it basically gave us hours upon hours having to pick up every single day.
Wow. Oh, I love it, love it. Um, oh, here's a question. I hadn't heard this. Someone said they heard that the ser- your series um Double Cross was actually based on Crystal and Howard's life as twins.
Um, okay, so we're not twins. We are fourteen months apart, I'm older than him, but growing up. Yeah.
I don't know why I thought that, but go ahead.
Um just cuz you can see his his gray on his face. I got gray up in here too, but I, no, I covered it up. But I'm fourteen months older than him, but growing up, everybody thought we were twins, so we've always been called twins. And even now, we'll tell people that we're not twins and they still call us twins, so. It's sometimes we don't correct people, um but it is based on um our relationship. Now, mind you, Double Cross uh they're vigilantes and they they will uh murder someone to get a child back. Uh we haven't murdered nobody. Um.
It's just loosely based.
But we do kill some situations.
But it's based on our relationship with with each other, um and the type of uh bond we have. Definitely, definitely that.
Yeah, and loyalty. I see loyalty in that.
Yeah.
Okay. You like you're gonna say something, Mr. Gibson, no?
Bigger than that, bigger than the loyalty. This is agape, this unconditional.
I love it. Are, is it only the two of you? Any more siblings?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a a sister, Candace Van Buren. Um she is our baby sister. She is starring in Double Cross this season as Tanya. Um she's Detective Ryan's wife. So if you watch the episodes uh today, Candace, uh that's our, that's our little sister.
So so there's another one there. So now you can say if that's our alter ego, Robin.
Ah, okay.
Candace in the same show.
And then we have an older brother, um and our oldest, huh?
Bernard Gibson, shout out.
Bernard Gibson. Our, oh, so we all we all have these talents. Our old older brother is uh the musician of the bunch. Um he he likes to uh produce music and things like that. So we'll we'll be throwing a couple of his tracks on there for uh season three. Um and so Howard and I are the directors and, you know, production, our baby sister. She's the actress, the singer and a lyricist. And this this child can write a song like nobody's business. It's weird that she has the talent to write a song, but she's not gonna write a script. But I have the talent to write a script, but I'm not gonna write a song. It's like our parents just gave birth to these artists somehow and neither one of my parents can sing or anything like that.
Oh, my goodness. I love it. Family affair, my goodness. Okay, let me, let me get to this. Jill McCord says, love the energy and the stories behind how you got started and continue to thrive. Um he says, do you have any tips on pre-production work such as shot list, scheduling, lighting, plan, et cetera?
Chris, go ahead, Chris, cuz you're different, you're different. Crystal's a different creation. She she don't, my sister don't use no shot list. She don't do any of that. She will pre-production, there's a lot of pre-production there, a lot of pre-production, but.
There's a lot of pre-production, but uh but my filmmaking is in my head. So I don't, even when I'm writing, I don't do a treatment um or an outline. Um unless maybe a network will request that if they need that, but it's all like, ah, I don't even need to, by the time I write the treatment, I can have a story. And then it's the same when I go to shoot, it's all in my head, so I don't necessarily have to have a shot list. Um but if you don't have it all up like that, then you know, you make your shot list. Um and in your pre-production, you do, you do your schedule, we like, we have to have schedules. It's it's no way that we could shoot without that.
That's really what we go off of, Chris, yeah. And I and I wanna say, I wanna say this to independent filmmakers. I mean, you have to do all of those things when it's just you, you know, but in this scenario, um the shot list and the schedules, that's deferred to our assistant director, you know. So we give them the script, yes, we do have it. Did Crystal do it? Not necessarily. She can do her own shot list and as her directing, she directing her own episodes. I do, I do, I'm a different, cuz I come out of music videos and commercials where I just had to make sure, I had to tell a whole story in thirty seconds or in two and a half or three minutes. I had to do a whole bunch of stuff there. So my discipline is different. Doesn't say it's good or bad, it's just different. So um I I do a lot of light planning, um I do, I do. So all those things, all those productions, details, I go so far into it, I'll put you to sleep. I'm so detailed about some things, you know.
And my light, my light planning is to simply go to my brother and say, all right.
And I go run and do everything, so it's all.
I'm like, I just wanted to be like real creepy and dark right here with like a little bit of shadows. He's like, okay.
Gotta figure it out. So those roles, when it comes to pre-production and the level of those, everything happens, everything. Does Crystal do it? She's doing her part. She's the showrunner, she's writing, she's directing. I want her to keep her mind right there. When it comes to me scheduling, when it comes to lighting and getting equipment there, when it comes to logistics, when it comes to strategy, how to get in and out of here, then you gonna go, that's a Howard question and I'm gonna go do that, you know, and make that happen. Anything story wise, anything wanna change something, I'm like, don't come to me, go to Crystal, you know.
That's a Crystal question. They may come to us or if it's, you know, things about the budget, that's not a question for either of us.
Either one of us.
Our producer, she has, we all have lanes. And so if you are in the indie world and you, you know, you're gonna step up into this feature film, it is important that you have a team around you. Because if you try to do all of this by yourself, you're not gonna be able to do it properly and it'll it'll be done sloppily. And so you have to be able to delegate and if you have to micromanage people, you either need to stop doing that or fire them, cuz I'm not gonna micromanage anybody. If you don't know how to do your job, you can go. And there have been times where Howard and I have have had to fire people. Um that's not uh pretty, is not something that we like to do, but we have done it. And if, you know, you're running your ship, you have to run a a tight ship so that you can have a a quality product. But definitely you get people in in place, your first ADs, you let them do. I don't do schedules. Now I'm gonna look at the schedule, if something's not right, then I'll tell you move this and that, but I'm not gonna actually do it. My first AD is gonna do that or the call sheets in the morning. Our second AD is gonna do the call sheets in the morning, you know what I mean? We can't do everything, so you do have to have the proper people in place.
Yeah, you'll bring yourself out really quickly trying to do that, you know. Um yeah, it's it's a real deal, you know, um so just keep going. I mean, try to figure out where your position is. If it's a writer, be a writer. You know, be a writer, learn the business, but be a writer and try to be good at what you do. Execute that. Don't be a jack of all trades in the master of none. Figure it out, figure it out. So tell everybody, you know, looking, you and you don't know for sure, I'm in the midst of discovery. That's all you need to tell them. I'm discovering the whole thing. I'm trying to learn it out. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a find where I fit in and I found where I fit in, you know, and I'm good at it. And 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 I like.
Yeah, be great, be awesome at it.
Awesome about it, you know, be awesome and embrace it and 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 go after it and be.
Yeah, and I always tell people, even the ones around me or the younger people on the set and the interns. Because I'll tell you what, when we rap, these young people surround me like I'm grandma at the funeral kicking wisdom. I, it's like, I'm standing, they're like, so 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 Ms. Crystal, well, how do we do this and, you know, how do? And so I'm like, I'm always, you know, kicking wisdom to them. And I I said, you know, be a person that's not easily walked away from.
That's it.
So you have to be of quality, um and you know, you're on that team, be of such value that if you were to get up and walk away, you about to throw a whole monkey wrench in this situation. And so in order for you to do that, you have to master your craft.
Aside, man, take their ego and put that thing in the closet and don't ever pull it out. Ego yourself. You know, go go holler at yourself in the closet and.
Put your ego to the side, walk on set with value.
With value, that's it. Job and do the. And then we're gonna see it. We're gonna see that asset because we work hard. I mean, I'm the last one standing. I'm still sweeping floors.
Ooh, they.
I'm still sweeping floors. I close the door. I'm the last one to eat every time we eat dinner or lunch. I am making sure I'm the last one there. I'm gonna make sure everybody eat first. I'm gonna sweep up and I'm gonna close the doors and I'm gonna be.
Gonna take the trash out.
Trash out. And people looked at me like, y'all got the EP doing that?
Yeah, so I was like, why is the EP taking the trash out? I was like, cuz the trash needs to be taken out.
I gotta sweep the floor. I need to mop right here. Let me mop, let me go get a bucket and mop. I'm gonna put out some more of these little journeys by COVIDs. Y'all gonna see a little more of what we're doing. You know, it's taking me a little time cuz, you know, I'll be giving away too much in the backgrounds and how the operation is, but I'm gonna put it out. You're gonna see, I mean, like, it's a lot of heavy, heavy lifting here and, you know, and I'm not gonna, you know, when I, when I see something that needs to happen, I'm not gonna walk away from it. I'm gonna make sure it's done, you know, and that's just how it is. And and I do, I got crazy ideas, man. Crystal writes something, I say, Crystal, I'm gonna do it and we're gonna do it this way. It's like, that's crazy, but we do it.
Cuz my mind, my mind is like, Howard, I wanna blow up a building. He's like, all right, this we gonna do. Write it, right? And then I'm gonna get this and that and a computer and put it in post and I blow it up, it's gonna be smoke, like.
Yeah, I I'm ready to call the commissioner, I'm ready to call the police department. I got the chief over here, I'm gonna block this floor up. I'm gonna do this, this here, then I'm gonna blow up twelfth floor. Boy, thank you.
I'm crazy enough to write it. He crazy enough to do it.
That's right.
See, that that's beautiful. Y'all come together, y'all work together just like that. I love this. Oh, my God, I love it. Um they're they're thanking you for your responses on here. Because I I again, I know that there are a lot of them that, there's some that actually have, uh I believe they grant, um what is it? Uh red carpet event for their indie uh independent film on this on this year, so I'm. Uh for their uh exquisite fractures series, that that's.
Oh, okay.
So I, we're we're excited about that, so they're 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 blaming from you on today. They are definitely blaming from you. Now, what I wanna do, I see Tara Smith and she put in here a couple of times. She wants you all to talk about your workshop that's coming up in March.
Um, is it March? I thought it was February. I don't know, she may know.
We're still working on that. Um we're definitely gonna give up this kind of information and more in depth into just really how to get your screen from Crystal's vantage point on the writing side, how to get your screenplay greenlit.
Well, yeah, well, what I'm actually gonna write is um not necessarily that, but how to write a a green lightable type of screenplay. And we may touch on on how to get it greenlit, like we may do some bullets. But um we normally do a workshop. But, um, we normally do, uh, workshops and parts. So for the first workshop, I might not talk about so much as how, how to get your screenplay greenlit. First of all, you need to write a green lightable screenplay. So we'll talk about doing that. And then when we do the next workshops, like now that you have the screenplay, how do you get it greenlit? So we'll have bullet points about that. And then we'll also do one on production. Um, you know, directing, you know, all that type, type of stuff. So yeah, just look out and Apostle Verro setting all that up. Um, but first and foremost, you need a screenplay. And y'all listening to me Facebook and all these people is like, I wanna be a filmmaker. The first thing that you must have is a screenplay that is green lightable. First. Because if you're asking me how to talk to an executive producer and I tell you that, but you don't even have a screenplay that is prepared, study and show yourself approved. Do everything properly.
In order and in steps. Do not pass. You cannot get into this game thinking you're gonna come up and be smarter than anybody else, cause you got some friends or some lick to get in. Doesn't work that way at all.
And you, you independent filmmakers, if you, you know, wanna venture over now into actually being greenlit, well, now these networks are giving you money, which they will. Because there are a lot of streaming channels out here right now and they are looking, let me tell you, they are looking for that content. And they will, will give you money. So if you wanna get to that part, you have to, you cannot come out here willy nilly with these screenplays written any type of way. And this is me being real with you. Or just thinking because you put some words on the paper, um, that this is a properly formatted screenplay. Go to the door, when that door opens and walk through there correct. Because, um, they, they will give you this money, but they, they not gonna give it to you if you're turning over a screenplay that's not done well. It's just not. So you go, that's the first step, um, that you really need to accomplish. And, um, you know, uh, try to master that. It's enough information, enough workshops, um, it's information on YouTube. And I'm gonna talk to you about all of that and the process and what it needs to look like and what, what your beats need to be in a screenplay. And the, the A.J. formula, boy meets girl. I'm gonna tell you, uh, that formula always works. And I can speak at a whole bunch of movies with the one, one TV show in particular right now. I know a lot of you are watching, watching, uh, Bridgerton on Netflix. Perfect formula of boy meets girl in that story.
Great structure.
Yeah, boy meets girl, boy and girl get to know each other, boy and girl fall in love, boy and girl break up. They always have to break up and then boy and girl gets back together. Basic formulas, um, I don't care what type, it could be a movie about friends. And they're not dating, but it's certain formulas that, that you have to have. And so we're gonna talk about that. I'm gonna show you what to do. And so that you can jump over into these streaming channels and you can get these budgets and you can get your films made.
Beautiful. And this is going to, you said, is it March or February or?
Um, I thought it was February.
By March. So it's gonna be like middle to late February, I think it would be around. Details, yeah.
Okay. Um, it looks like she put in the comments section, if anyone is interested, they can email, um, I believe Apostle Verro, I believe that's her email, from nine twenty at AOL. So you guys look in the comments section. Tara Smith Hughes did put the comment of how to, um, participate in that workshop. And a correction, thank you, Joe McCord. They have a screening event this year, not a release. So thank you.
Oh, good. Good for you. That's what you do.
Alright, but sounds like y'all on the right track, guys. Um, let's see, there is another question and then I wanna actually play the spoken word. Um, Brandy says, are the workshops online or in person?
Uh, there'll be Zoom online.
For me, there'll be a little bit of both, um, when it comes to different things in the producing realm, more physical stuff. Um, you'll see a lot of, uh, Zoom, but then I'm sure that once it gets down and dirty, it'll be something.
Well, yeah, where COVID lifts a little too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right now, we will be online though. It'll be a lot of information. So we'll get that, but, uh, no worries if you're not where we are. We'll get online, but we'll be very physical in what we're doing. Uh, and then down the stretch, we'll have more of an intern program and, uh, that'll be next level on other shows and we'll invite people on uh, to sets and make it happen. If they show us value.
Value.
Love it. I love it. You guys are just phenomenal. I just, I, I just appreciate both of you. I'm so glad I met y'all. And I'm not even trying to be a indie, independent filmmaker, but I love it. I love the energy that you all are bringing. What I want to do, guys, and I want the, uh, Gibsons to hear this as well, there's a spoken word that was pinned for today's topic title. Um, and it was pinned by Elder Kevin McGee. He does have a show. My, my show airs at Intellectual Radio. He has a show as well. But he will pin a spoken word on the, uh, topic of the day for Mind, Body and Soul. So I want you guys to take, listen to this and then we'll be right back.
Sibling rivalry is real, but so is sibling togetherness. And it's that bond that allows brother and sister to grow and flow and become a force of color that no one can handle. Better than one twin power, better than Luke and Leia. Them Gibsons are charting new territory and blazing new paths where no siblings have gone before. Black never cracks, but it also never lacks creativity and the juice to succeed. Beyond possessing power, beyond building an empire, them Gibsons are going global, streaming and beaming content from their minds to your heart. And as this flow drops, so does their latest project, taking media by storm, all of the stations and places. People and faces better watch out because they are coming out swinging, right cross, left cross, crisscross, double cross. When they get finished, huh, you'll be making the sign of the cross.
That was awesome. Come on, man, shout out.
I wanna copy it. We'll, we'll get you guys a copy. We'll get you guys a copy. He, he, I mean, you know, he, I could just tell him what my show is gonna be about. He doesn't really even have to know like details or anything. He just go, he just goes to writing. I'm like, that was.
Yes, I loved it. It made me feel good. Just feel good on this.
Good, good. I'm so glad you enjoyed it. Is there anything else that you want to share with anyone? Um, I know we want to, of course, before we leave, let everyone know where we can find Double Cross on today. Um, but anything you wanna maybe just, I don't know, you, you've been inspirational all day on this session. But anything you wanna maybe share with anyone just to, uh, continue to, or something you want them to know?
Yeah, I, I don't want them to, to, to give up. And, uh, I want them to, and I say this on most, most interviews, that please understand that God is your source. And, um, there may be a dream or, um, sort of, uh, aspiration or, um, a purpose for you. And you don't know quite how to do it. It is okay. You don't have to know how to do it, because if you sit here and you try to figure out every step, you will quit. So you don't need to know every step. You just need to take a step. And those doors will open for you. And be prepared, study your craft. You wanna be a writer, I want you to look up videos, uh, on writing. Be ready when that door opens. But God is your source. Do not quit. You will happen.
Mr. Gibson?
Commitment to yourself. I want you to, you know, start getting yourself mentally healthy. It's really, really, really the balance that breaks us and that, or makes us, right? Follow up and follow through is a big deal. Follow and follow through with yourself. Do it. There's no one stopping you to do what you wanna do. Nobody. You got twenty-four hours in that day. If you can't do nothing, but you can sleep, get up an hour. And I remember I used to get up in the middle of the night. I felt, thought about something. I would do the work and go back to sleep. That was the only time I had at that moment. And I was doing something for somebody else all that day, but I was giving myself one or two hours a day. I kept going, one hour commitment, then two hour commitment, there were three hour commitment, and that was my life, all me. So I had to walk that all the way getting into, I can sustain myself and sustain this. And so start there. And it was started when I wasn't ready for it. It didn't look good. None of it looked good.
Okay, please don't, don't give up.
Commitment.
That's right.
Commitment to yourself. If nobody else believe it, believe you and do it and learn and gain the knowledge, insight and move towards that and go to the next step and learn more. That's.
Sometimes you don't even need to tell everybody what you're doing, because someone next to you may, like, oh, you ain't gonna be able to do that. You know, those Debbie Downers, don't tell them nothing. Move in silence and, and keep going. And no, you may not know every step that you need to take to get, get where you're going. And that, that's okay. But I'm telling you, please listen to me. I'm telling you guys, I was a stay at home mom. Six kids, a kid with special needs. I had stepped out of the film game. And I did not know how I was gonna get back into it. I just knew the goals that I wanted to ascertain. And a lot of times when you have those goals and those things pressing, that's God telling you it's already yours. And if you know that, then you won't, you won't move in fear. So just keep going. And that's it. We said it at the same time. That's it. See, we're twins.
I love it, guys. I, I just wanna thank both of you so, so much for taking time. I know it was only supposed to have been an hour. We're a little bit over an hour, so I apologize. I don't like to take advantage of individuals' time. But I, I just wanted to make sure that we were able to get in as much as we could today, although we didn't even scratch the surface. But it's okay. So, um, do one of you wanna tell me some of the different TV networks that they can, um, go and find the second season on today of Double Cross?
Yeah, um, so we are on the All Black Network, which was formerly UMC. So se- season two is streaming on there. You can also get to the All Black Network via Amazon Prime or Apple TV. Um, if you wanna get caught up on season one, it's streaming free right now on Roku. And if you're a member on, uh, Amazon Prime and also Apple TV, it's, yeah.
Everywhere.
Everywhere, you know, it's, it's a streaming channel, just like Netflix or Hulu. So. I'll watch it and enjoy.
Beautiful, beautiful. Now, many of you, if you have to go back and binge on the first season, do that. You can do that. Um, I'm sure you can find the first season of Double Cross and then make sure you get into the second season. Uh, again, I am, I am so honored to have had you both on, on today and to, to give us all the insight that you have given us. And I'm actually gonna take a lot of that advice for what I need to do. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Welcome. Thank you for having us.
Yes, and I, and I wanna thank all of you that are watching, that are listening, those that have commented, thrown in your questions. Um, hopefully I didn't, uh, miss anyone on today, uh, with your questions. So please forgive me, charge it to my head and not my heart. We were just trying to move through on today. But thanks for joining us and for sharing, um, those names that I did not get a chance to call out. Thank you. And if you are just not joining us, you may have to go back, be kind and rewind and listen to the, it from the beginning. Um, and make sure you support this brother sister, uh, team.
Follow us on, uh, on Instagram. Um, I am Crystal Gibson and Howard is Howard's Journey. So you can follow us there.
I just shared the link.
Oh, wonderful. Oh, see, y'all sinking. Y'all, he's typing and you, you talking it. Alright, I love it. Do you all finish each other's like sentences? You were doing, you were doing it today. You really were. I love it. Alright, guys, we're gonna get out of here. Uh, thank you again for joining me for the first session of twenty twenty-one. And I am so glad that I brought it in this way. And I want you guys to make sure you go to my website, getcaughtinannetradio.com. Again, I talked at the beginning, there are a lot of positive things that I'm doing on this year. The Lord has directed me. You can see some different sides of Annette on this year. So I want you guys to make sure you keep up with me again. Go to my website, Get Caught Internet Radio, and you will be able to see everything. You will not be disappointed. Gibsons, please don't go anywhere. I'm gonna do my end and then we're gonna, I wanna talk to you before you leave, if you, if you have time. Alright, guys, take care and we will see you soon.
Bye.
Bye.
Alright, guys, you know what I always tell you at the end of every broadcast? Make sure you stay safe. Wash your hands, wear your mask, and we will see you soon. Take care.